Melissa, did you turn the mics on and everything was?
No.
Oh, okay. Well, now I'm gonna give the business to Cheryl.
As you know, she wanted to sit in here.
Cheryl never did that, like, never. She's gonna hear it, too.
Percent, so we're performing better than budgeted in both categories.
Very good, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions from council for the Mayor regarding the budget? Okay, from the press or public? All right. Next on our agenda, we have communications. And we have one communication from Mayor Sherri L. Capello informing council of the reappointment of Guadalupe Barba, Janelle Grau, Joseph Morales, and Richard Wertz to the Design Review Board for a five-year term effective July twenty-two, 2025. And Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a seven-member board with four current members' terms which are up for reappointment. They are representing a downtown business owner, city staff, city council, and the historical society. This board reviews requests made for murals and/or public art in the city.
Okay. Any questions from council regarding this communication? Okay, and from the press and public? I saw one hand, all right. Double-check and make sure that mic is on, and if you could give your name and address, as you know, Cornell.
It's in Twenty-seventh South Sixth Street. Was there any requests in the last six months for murals? What do you consider a facade when they read? Yeah, okay. Really should be coming to the board, or is the word out there? I've seen some murals lately.
Um, we saw one mural last week, and they had not approached us, so that's something that we'll have to handle.
Okay, just curious.
Yeah. It's a temporary mural on a window.
Sorry, does someone have...
That's okay.
Um, already reserved, or asked you to do a mural on Lehman Street, the playground that's on the east end?
No.
Okay. All right.
No.
But it's not there, but...
Okay, well, I hope not. It's city property. We have not received any requests.
Thank you, Cornell. And that actually is... So you said, Janelle, you said the changing the facades of a building front, and is that just the downtown business district, or is that all of Cumberland Street? You said Cumberland Street? Okay. Okay. That's just interesting, I did not, I was unaware that that was part of the purview of the Design and Review Board, so, yeah, thank you. Any other questions at this time from council, press, or public?
Kind of two functions. They review murals and/or public art within public view, and then they also review historical features on buildings in the historical overlay district.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I want to thank these individuals, our own councilperson, Morales, for stepping up and putting themselves at the disposal of this board to do this work, so we commend these volunteers. We're gonna move on to our resolutions. Our first resolution is Resolution Number Twenty-six, and it is approving the five-year the five-year consolation consolidated plan. I have, I've been in the sun all day today, so I'm struggling a little bit. I ask you all to be patient, and I appreciate that. All right, approving the five-year consolidate consolidated plan for fiscal year 2025 through 2029 and fiscal year 2025 annual action plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program. And do I have a motion for Resolution Twenty-six? Thank you, Sean. And do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Karen. And Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So HUD, the Housing and Urban Development, has estimated that our fiscal year 2025 Community Development Block Grant will be around six-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars plus program income, we believe to be in the amount of twenty thousand dollars. We've prepared a consolidated plan for years 2025 through 2029 and an annual action plan for fiscal year 2025 funding year that assesses the housing needs of extremely low, low and moderate-income households, homeless families and individuals, and others with special needs. And the draft of the consolidated plan and the annual action plan was on public display for thirty days. We held a series of public hearings, took into consideration any comments that were provided in preparation of the final document. I think we went into pretty much of what the monies would be spent on, but the, real quickly, the 2025 CDBG annual budget, a hundred-and-four-thousand is proposed to be budgeted for public services, police, for low-income areas of the city as defined by the census, two-hundred-thousand for street improvements in low-income areas, a hundred-and-thirty-thousand limited to low-income areas for code enforcement, a hundred-and-thirty-thousand for general administration, and that's, we're limited to twenty percent of our grant and program income. And then a hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars for citywide spotlight acquisition and demolition, and that totals seven-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions from council on Resolution Twenty-six at this time? Okay, from the press and public? And I would, yep, go ahead, come on up. As you know, name and address.
Dave Funk, Six-O-Nine Chestnut Street. Are there any, I know, I heard you mentioned demolition for blighted properties. Do you have any specific properties for that, or is that just earmarked for...
Not really.
Potential.
I know, yeah.
I assume you have to acquire them first.
I'm sorry.
You have to acquire them.
Right.
First, which is the hard part, probably.
Yes, that is the hard part sometimes. So sometimes what happens is, you know, there's fires, and then the people don't have insurance or not enough insurance, and we'll work with Habitat for Humanity, or we'll work with our land bank, and that's typically, over the last several years, kind of how we've partnered to make projects happen. So we just want to make sure that we have money reserved, that we can do that if an opportunity provides itself. A hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand isn't a lot of money, so we're probably looking at one project or so, so, yeah. But if we don't budget for it, then we can't do it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Any other questions at this time? Okay. Melissa, if you would please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
Yes, and that is five in favor, none against. This resolution has been moved. Next on our agenda, we have Resolution Number Twenty-seven, and this is amending the annual act, the annual plan for the Community Planning and Development Program with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for fiscal year 2023 to rebudget unspent funds to support public facilities and recreation improvements. So, Mayor?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, again, the city prepared a five-year consolidated plan, but this is for the period 2020 to 2024, which includes our Community Development Block Grant Program. We also developed an annual plan for each program year of those years of the federal funds. We have unused funds from fiscal year 2023 in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars, and we would like to allocate that to support public facilities and recreational improvements, in particular, the northeast playground. We've made the amendment to the fiscal year 2023 annual plan available for citizen review and comment for a period of thirty days, consistent with our citizen participation plan, and we considered any comments received. Basically, this is to do a complete refresh of the playground at northeast park. We would be replacing wood timbers with plastic borders, excavating out the old mulch, adding a new four-inch stone drainage layer with Geotex cell fabric and new mulch and new playground equipment.
Thank you, Mayor.
And we're keeping the cheese.
There we go.
Because it's sentimental to people.
So, we're gonna hold questions at this time. Like I said, I was baked in the sun today, so I am out of order. I forgot to ask for a motion for this resolution, so do I have a motion for this resolution?
Yes, I will make a motion to adopt Resolution Number Twenty-seven.
Thank you, Karen. And do I have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
All right, this motion has been seconded and moved. So now, does council have any questions regarding Resolution Number Twenty-seven for the Mayor?
Madam Mayor, when would this project be initiated?
So, we have, we're going off of Co-Stars. Do we know? That's right. Yeah. So, of course, forty-five thousand dollars isn't enough for the project. We also applied for a grant, we're waiting for that, but we need to rebudget this money in order to add it to the pot. We're keeping our fingers crossed that we get the grant.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
I have a question, and that kind of even prompts it even further. So how long do you have to spend unspent monies from previous grants?
Go ahead.
Seven, okay.
And if you don't spend it within a certain period of time, you could get an untimeliness, and so we try and keep on top of it. And plus, the money is there to make things happen in specific areas as we described in our plans, so we want to make sure that we're offering those quality-of-life improvements to our citizens as quickly as we can.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
And I would make a recommendation. We had, just for anybody, if you want more information, we had quite an extensive conversation about this at our Thursday pre-council meeting, which is posted on our council YouTube page. So, yeah. Any other questions at this time? From the press? And anyone in attendance? All right. Melissa, could you please call the roll?
Mrs. Hatos?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Morales?
Yes. Yes.
Chairman Martin?
Yes, and that is five in favor, none against. This motion has been adopted, or this resolution has been adopted. That brings us to the end of our formal agenda for tonight's meeting. I'd like to, right now, open the floor to council for anything that they would find would be to the good of the city.
Captain, I just wanted to commend Officer St. Clair. I read the article in the paper, and for those that aren't aware, Officer St. Clair handled a, and you can help me out, Captain, if I'm off-base, but animal neglect complaint, and in the process of making the call, he noticed a young child that was kind of distraught about the neglect that had happened. Officer St. Clair, on his own, came back later and brought some toys, I guess, basically, you know, to comfort, and it was a great news piece to read. And one thing I think the article didn't explain, I mean, these traumatic experiences that, you know, especially in a young child, to have the officer come back and kind of follow up with this, kind of breaks that chain. If these victims of trauma aren't heard, you know, it can have lasting effect, and it can manifest itself in many ways. I'm not a doctor, but the fact that Officer St. Clair did that, I mean, he, you know, God only knows what a difference he could possibly have made in this young boy's life. So I just wanted to publicly commend one of our officers, and Captain, if you could please, or, you know, if you could please pass that on, I would appreciate that.
And also, it really shows his character because he didn't share it with the others on, in the police department, or his captain. He did it on his own with his own money, and the distraught child's mother...
Grandmother.
Grandmother came into the police department to share pictures, and that's how we found out about it.
I was not aware of that, and...
About four months later, so...
Wow.
And I mean, I would suggest that these type of acts occur within our city, not only our city, but the entire state and country.
Yeah.
From police every day. They're just not carrying a camera with them to show everybody.
And the dog, the dog's okay?
Good, so.
Great ending. Captain, thank you.
I appreciate it, I'll make sure to pass that on.
Well, thank you for bringing that to our attention, Joe. I did not get a chance to read this article, I'll have to go look for that then. Just makes me proud of my, our police force here in Lebanon City, so... Thank you, guys, for the work that you do, taking care of, taking care of all of us. So, any other, any other items of interest from council? Okay. And at this time, I'm gonna open it to anyone from the public, if you have anything you'd like to share, the floor is yours. Okay? If you want to tip that mic up a little more, it's, yep, there you go.
Cornell Wilson, Twenty-seventh South Sixth Street. I just want to invite everybody, you public officials, to the biggest back-to-school festival that happens in the county. Last year, we gave out eight-hundred bookbags. We stuffed today about nine-hundred to a thousand bookbags. We, there's over fifty vendors at the YMCA this Saturday, nine to eleven. Or tell anybody who has children who would want a bookbag, it's not just for the poor. I mean, hopefully, they get one for sure, but, and if someone wasn't there, and we, or we ran out, we'll make sure that someone got a bag if they were there and we ran out. If we ran out, that's a good thing, that a thousand kids showed up. But also, I do also want to thank the police and the fire because they're always supporting community events. We won't get the education house this year, but still, we're getting at something better, and I appreciate that you come and support these big community events, and there, and not there for security, but there to be a participant, so thank you.
What time was that, Cornell? I'm sorry.
Nine to eleven on Saturday at the YMCA. It's gonna be back in the middle school in the future, but they're working on stuff, so we had to go back to the Y, so it's gonna, it's gonna be very tight, but we'll make it work, and it'll be a good time for the kids and the families, and a lot of giveaways, games, snacks, foods, face painting, and all that stuff.
Thank you, Cornell.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Always appreciate it. Anyone else from the public? All right, come on up. And of course, as you know, if you could state your name and your address.
Craig Gates, Forty-seven Borough One Park. The Community Lebanon Association is holding their annual car show, and we're pleased that this year, we're back downtown. So it's Sunday, August seventeenth, registration begins around nine o'clock, and it's a, no need to preregister this year, we're gonna handle a little bit differently. It goes from Fifth Street down to Ninth Street. So we're excited to have it back downtown again this year, that's Sunday, August seventeenth. On another note, if you haven't noticed, the hanging baskets and the planters are absolutely beautiful this year, and we have a lot to thank the city for watering for us this year. It's been a learning curve.
Yes.
So thank you, Janelle, thank you, Melissa, talking with Ed from Stony Bridge. He's giving his advice on how to do it a little bit better, but regardless, they look absolutely beautiful, so thank you, city, for doing the watering for us this year. Thank you.
Hey, Craig, how many, this is just something that popped in my head, it seems like there have been more food vendors at the car show. Do you know how many are gonna be there this year?
I do not, because that's still in, you know, if they come at the last minute, but we are expecting a lot this year because it is back downtown, so...
No, for sure, I'm very much looking forward to that, and yeah, like I said on Thursday, the downtown is looking absolutely gorgeous, so... Thank you, CLA, for getting, doing the work for that, and then the city, too, for maintaining, so, but yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Craig. Anybody else, all right, yeah, come on up. And of course, as you know, too, your name and your address.
Norman Tobias, Wyndham Street, Lebanon. I didn't know if I really wanted to say anything, but the, myself and the family, as we did many other years, we helped this year with the Day of Caring. And they assigned this trash pickup around the perimeter of Coleman's Park. So we were doing that, the grandchildren got ahead of us, of course, and then they said there was some, some refuge and things near the tennis courts. So we worked our way up that way, and we discovered that it was rubbish that someone had dumped there from, it looked like from a burn barrel, burned up cans and things, and it kind of, it kind of hurt my heart. So I explained it to the director who was there that day, and I don't remember his name, and he said, "That's really not some of the worst of it." He said that sometimes they bring sofas and chairs and things and bring them into the park. So it's been burning in my heart all this time. I know you have the dog park coming in, and you have the pickleball court and whatever else, and I know we have, I attend the music in the park on a Sunday, but my suggestion would be, is to have as many activities as you can try to put in the park as possible so that there's more eyes seeing things that might prevent that from happening in the future. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Norman.
Hey, thank you. And to plug a little bit, the park, the, I, my family has used, as far as events, having private events there, my family has used the pavilion, rented them at times, and it is, it is a really nice place to have a party, so, or a gathering or such. So, yeah, there could be more use there, I'd highly recommend it if you have, if you're looking for a spot. But yeah, unfortunately, that's more common than what any of us would like to see, the, you know, this random disposal of items, you know? It's very easy to, at least in my opinion, very easy to get rid of our waste in our current, in our current forms of removal, but still, I guess, for some people, it's easier to haul it up and dump it in random locations on a public park. I don't understand it, but definitely frowned upon, so thank you for making us aware of that.
I will add, thank you, Norman, for your helping out on the Day of Caring. Speaking as a trustee with the park, we are bringing a lot more activity into the park, so we're thrilled about that. And I will report, you know, I've been a trustee, I don't know, Dave, how long are we, four, five years now? Those incidences of dumping are way down, so we're thankful for that. I mean, it does still happen, but we have friends of the park, we have our caretaker, our manager, and lots of folks that visit the park, and as soon as they see that stuff, a lot of them, they'll pick it, they'll either pick it up or give us a call, and we get rid of it really quickly. So it is sad that it does happen, but I do think the incidences of those type of occurrences are down, thank God, so, but, but again, thank you for what you're doing, Norman, appreciate that.
Okay, all right, come on up, Dave. I think you may have already given your name and address.
Dave Funk, Six-O-Nine Chestnut. Yeah, I'll amplify what Joe said. We are increasing our activities, I'm also on the board. We have movie night coming up, pickleball tournament, is that the thirtieth? Yeah, the pickleball court scene action, we're gonna soon hopefully get the dog park completed, concerts, so we are, you know, a lot of activities going on there. The other thing I wanted to talk about is the Lebanon County Coalition and homelessness is having another point-in-time count for the summer. And then the point-in-time count of unsheltered persons, and it's gonna be on the evening of Wednesday, August sixth. The purpose of the summer count is to connect those who are experiencing homelessness to the services, to services, and to better understand the problem of homelessness at the local level. St. Andrews Presbyterian Church is assisting with the planning and hosting this event as part of their Mission Week. Volunteers are needed, and the volunteers can register through Lebanon County Community Health Council webpage, or they can contact Laurie Funk. So we're excited, the second year we're doing this, and the summer's, you know, we do it every winter, that's a requirement from HUD, I believe, but we're, we find a different, different people in the summertime, so...
Thank you, Dave, thank you for making us aware of that, and the work that you've done for the community, we really appreciate it.
And they are looking for volunteers, correct, Dave?
Yes, sir.
To assist, so...
Is this the time that you found out about that, Joe, or did you, have you previously signed up, or did you just right now?
I've helped a few times, so, yeah.
I wasn't sure if he volunteered you at this moment.
I'm gonna be out of town for this one day, sorry. But they are, they are looking for volunteers, so...
Yeah, and it's a good way to get a feel, obviously, like it's a national issue, homelessness, we have some great resources in our community. We have some great resources in our community, but obviously, we need to get a feel for what, you know, the need is in our, in our community, so an official count, a great way. Okay. Anyone else from the public at this time? All right, come on up. And if you could state your name and your address for the record.
Matt Driscoll, 439 Chestnut Street. I just wanted to mention there were a couple of streetlights I think the bulbs need replacing at the intersections, or at the intersection of Chestnut and Fifth. I know the one directly next to our building has been out for a while, and I think the one across the intersection has, too. I don't have the poll numbers or anything like that, but, yeah.
Did you say Fifth and Chestnut?
Yeah, Fifth and Chestnut.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Matt. Yeah. All right, anyone else? Okay, hearing none, seeing none. At this time, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second? All right. Thank you, gentlemen. This meeting is adjourned. Everyone, have a great night, and I will see you all.